Good evening, everyone. We're here for a city council meeting, and it is July 17th, 2017. We'll start with our roll call and determination of quorum.
Scott, Drew, Nordstrom, Modrick, Solomon, Lewis, Armstrong, Laurenti, Drury, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now, our invocation by Pastor Scott Wiley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. For God of all creation, we come to you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise, and you're the source of all that is good. You're the source of all our blessings, and we thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct this meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
... to the black of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands.
Thank you, everyone. And now, on to the adoption of the agenda. Does the council have changes it would like to make to the agenda? Or if not, can we have a motion to adopt? We have a motion to adopt by Solomon, and a second by Drew. All in favor of adoption of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we're gonna, I'm gonna step down front for an award, and if we could have Eric Hykes come forward, please.
Well, the city supports a sustainability committee in effort to be good stewards of all that we have here on Earth concerning energy and resources and so on. And a member of our sustainability committee is here. Eric Hykes is here to present tonight's sustainability award.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's award is a bit overdue. We've actually not given award for almost a year. We were doing a little bit of recalibration of how our sustainability committee acknowledges those businesses in the region that are doing things brilliantly or high, on a higher level or a standard that's even more calibrated, more significant than those surrounding them. And we found one, and we've gotten our award process delineated such that I think the intention of, we're gonna give one notable award every year, and no better award than this one to Wild Idea. Wild Idea has a simple, prescriptive approach. They do buffalo, and they do buffalo very well. And the, we should all learn from a company like this one in that they've taken a very simple process. They graze buffalo on native grassland, and they find a market for this buffalo that is sought after highly all over the country, and they tie those two markets together. They hold the production of their buffalo to such a high standard that they can demand a premium price. They also add value to the production in that they make great smoked products, they make specialty meats, and they have their eyes on other market demand that is particularly explicit and exceptional in the area and around the country. So, value-added agriculture, I think this company defines that, and it's my great pleasure to introduce Dan and Jill O'Brien here to come up and accept this award. So, in case you all didn't know, they've been doing this for about 20 years. They have almost 30 employees, including their family, and they do great. With no further ado, Dan and Chris, I'd like, I'm sorry, and Jill, I'd like you to say a few words.
We want to thank the city council and the sustainability committee. We take this very seriously, and we are so happy to see our community take it seriously. This is, we're playing for big chips here, and we've been doing it for a while. I want to introduce my daughter in the back, Jillian, with Barrett, my son Lucas, my son-in-law Colton, and my grandson Lincoln. They have been major pieces of this puzzle. They work every day very hard to get this right and to contribute to the sustainability that Rapid City's getting to be known for, and I'm pretty proud of all of that.
So, ditto what Dan said on the thanks, and I just want to elaborate a little bit more on what holds Wild Idea up. It's really a three-legged stool. It's our family, because it's a family business, and without them, we would be lost. It is our working force who takes such pride in what they do. In addition to our working force, we work with about 15 other ranchers around the community that hold those same values of sustainability in place, and so we owe a lot to them as well. And then the third leg of that stool is, of course, all of you for demanding higher-quality food, knowing where your food comes from, and then caring about that. So, thank you.
I know some of you missed it. Oh, let's stay up here for picture, you guys. Let's get a picture first. But I know some of you missed it, but Dan said when he started talking, "We're playing for big chips here." No pun intended.
Of course not.
Of course not, okay.
And now, we are on to general public comment, a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the city council members present. We have one speaker request form for general public comment. I'm sorry, oh. All right, thanks for catching that. Okay, we'll back up then. We'll take item number two, an update from Rapid City Economic Development. Ben Snow.
Thank you for your vast mercy, Mayor. I don't know how long the public comment will take, but we owe you, the city council, a report back on some of the activities of our organization. About this time last year, we made a request of the city council for an increase in our annual funding allotment, and thankfully, you honored that request, and we wanted to just give a report back on some of the cool stuff we've been working on the first half of this year. And so, I'll go through some of these items, and then keep in mind, if you do have any questions, you can certainly pose those to me. I also have, joining me here, the vice chairman of our board, Mr. Jay Hammerquist, here in the second row, so you can ask all of your questions of him, because I'll split right after I'm done here. So, the first thing I wanted to just remind everybody about is what our organization is all about. And anybody who's ever heard us talk about our mission and our purpose in life, it is to grow the Rapid City economy as intelligently as we can, and we feel like the most effective way to do that is focus on what we call primary jobs, or jobs that fuel the economy on a year-round basis. We prefer jobs that have higher-than-normal pay scales, because that builds more household wealth, and so that's where our priorities are. All the programs we have are focused on that type of job growth, which means we give a little bit better treatment to companies who pay higher wages than those that pay the low wages. Here's just a slide, an example, a picture of, if you will, of the types of companies that we would love to see grow here in the Rapid City area. Up in the corner, you can see some of the major tools that we have at our disposal to help in this endeavor, and I'll talk about one of those more detail here in just a few minutes. Part of our request to the city last year was our desire to be more involved with workforce development. This is a growing problem throughout the country, throughout the state. South Dakota has an extremely low unemployment rate, and at first pass, you might think that that's a very good thing and a very positive sign for the economy, and for the most part, it is pretty good news that we have a low unemployment rate. But when the unemployment rate gets to be too low, that can actually send out chilling signals to people that might be interested in expanding into our community, because they'll take a look at the unemployment rate, they'll see that we're a relatively smaller-sized population, and that may send a chilling signal to them that they may not be able to find the talent that they need here in our marketplace. So, one of the things, we've actually done a couple of things to address workforce challenges. I personally was a member of the Skilled Workforce Advocacy Council for the last two or three years, and our group was squarely behind the effort that was on the ballot last fall, which was known as Amendment R, which passed and which changes the state constitution to allow for the technical institutes, there's four of them throughout the state, we've got Western Dakota Tech out here, and for them to be governed by a separate board, which the legislature did this past session, creating the South Dakota Board of Technical Education. For those of you who do not know, the governor appointed nine members to this board, and there are two of them that have business interests here in the Black Hills area. The first there you can see is Scott Canupi, who runs the Caterpillar Engineering Design Services Center, and Scott Peterson, many of you may know him, he has a series of auto dealerships, mostly in Belfus and Sturgis, and these are two excellent spokespeople for West River, and we're delighted to have them on this governor's board. And then, we did hire, thanks to support from the city, we've hired a workforce development coordinator for our office. So, we had three people on our staff, and we now have four, so we're glad to be able to have a function of workforce development focus. And Ryan Harris is the guy that we've hired, so he's been on the job about six months. And some of the things that has taken place over the first six months of the year is Ryan has visited with other workforce development coordinators throughout the state, because a lot of the economic development groups have had workforce development pro onboard for several years, and so he's learning some best practices from those folks, he's attending some trainings, he'll be in Minneapolis in a couple of weeks to learn from that, as well as he's had a lot of visits with existing businesses to learn firsthand what some of their challenges are with our existing workforce. Our goal is also to connect the dots a little bit stronger between the institutes of education, that's K-12 all the way up through the technical institute and our universities here, and connect those dots with the employers who are looking for the talent that they need to grow their business. And in fact, we have a partnership with Rapid City Area Schools, where they're gonna be doing a meeting in August, and both Ryan and I will be participating on that to help let the school district, influential people within the school district, understand how important it is that we're developing a pipeline of talented people here. The other thing we talked about in our request to the city was this concept of the Innovation District. Most of you are familiar with the downtown master plan that the city did last year, and within the downtown master plan, between the school mines and downtown, there's been an area identified as the Innovation District, and we have taken that to the next level. As you know, we operate our business out of the Business Development Center, a lot of people dubbed that the Business Incubator. It's a 40,000-square-foot facility, it's been at or near capacity for nearly two years, so we now are exploring the feasibility of building another facility much like the incubator. We're using the term innovation in keeping with this Innovation District. We've looked at the geography between school mines and downtown as the ideal place for a new facility, and we're at the first stage looking to at least double our capacity. And so, that's an exciting development in our world. Right now, we've got about 25 tenants in the Business Development Center, and we've got a waiting list of people, the knocking on the door that we have to turn away, and we would like to be able to offer that type of space. Huge economic impact during the life of this center, which is now 10 years old, there's been over 40 companies and over 750 jobs created during those tenancies, so it's time to take a look at expanding our footprint there. Here's a map of that Innovation District situated between the school mines and downtown, so more to come, the latter half of this year, as we work on finding locations there. A consultant has been hired to identify uses, land uses and buildings that could serve well in this capacity, so there'll be more on that. Another program we're really excited about is called Economic Gardening. This is probably a new term for many people, but think of economic development as being one of two methods, economic hunting, where you go out and find companies from some other place and you bring them back to our community, or economic gardening, which is a more organic approach to growing the economy by focusing on the companies that are already here, that are already headquartered here. They may be small, they may only have 10 or 20 or 30 employees, but they're poised for rapid growth, and they're headquartered here, so we don't have to sell them on the merits of moving into our community. So, this organic approach, we've actually partnered with a group called the National Center for Economic Gardening that's based in Michigan, and it was founded by a guy that I know personally while during my days doing economic development down in the Front Range of Colorado, and we, thanks to the support from the city, we have launched a pilot project for economic gardening, and we have so far put seven companies through this program that are at various stages. A couple of them have now come out of the program, and with the city's continued funding of our organization, I would like to be able to put every eligible second-stage company in Rapid City through this program. Think of a second-stage company as companies that have between 10 and 99 employees and annual revenues between $1 million and $50 million a year. But what's important is the Economic Gardening is a way of helping companies through better intelligence, better, it's not really consulting services that we put them plugged into as much as it is research professionals, research experts who can help their business dial down, figure out the competitive landscape, figure out where they're missing opportunities for new sales growth, and again, contact me if you have any questions about this, but we're very excited about being able to put more and more of our companies through this, the Economic Gardening project. The last couple of things I want to talk about is our efforts to become more visible as an organization, and one of the things, three things we're going to be doing this year to become more visible is to participate a little bit more aggressively with the, whenever opportunities to tourism come to us, for example, the Fireball Run that's gonna be coming to Rapid City and filming in September, it's gonna be a great commercial for Rapid City, because we're the wrap-up, final spot for this, so our organization is supporting that event in forms of being a sponsor at the finish line for it. And so, the Fireball Run's an opportunity where tourism is bringing a great event to get exposure here, and we have an opportunity to message to some of these people about the business opportunities available here in Rapid City. We will also be placing some ads at the airport and in the civic center, the two high-traffic areas in the south, east and west, south side of the civic center, will be placing ads, and some of the ads will be taking the form like these examples that I'm sharing with you here. An idea that as we go through these high-traffic places in town, that we're more than just a place where you can goof off and have a lot of fun, but this, there's legitimate opportunities to work here, and then they can go to our website, contact our office, so we can plug them into any of the connections, incentives, and market intel that we have to help them make that decision. Here's an example of an ad that will be placed out at the airport. This is, the airport's trying some new things as far as marketing, so this is right across the hallway from where the eating, eaterie is on the, after you've been ticketed, gone through security, and there's a blank wall there, we'll be taking advantage of that. This is an example of the flyer we shared with the folks with the Fireball Run. And so, the one other thing we did ask about, which we did not get funding from the city, was we were gonna hire an investor relations person to help us with our, as you know, we're a public-private model, we get the majority of our funding from Rapid City, the rest of it comes from private sector investment, pro-growth types of entities who want to see the community grow. What we've done instead is we have partnered with our friends over at the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, and we have paid a fundraising entity to conduct a feasibility study, which is taking place right now, this, over the next month or two, and we want to do a capital campaign, not a membership drive, but a capital campaign that's a five-year program sponsored by the Rapid City Economic Development and the Chamber of Commerce in order to focus on key initiatives that we don't have the current funding to do, neither the Chamber nor the Economic Development Group. So, I just want to give you a heads up, the private sector is leading this effort. There may come a time when we come to the city to ask for a match of sorts from the money raised from the private sector, but all I want to do is just get this on your radar screens, we're not asking for anything at this point. I just wanted to let you know that's something that the business community is dialing in on and working very hard on this summer, so there'll be more information to come there. You may hear the name Elevate Rapid City, we haven't really branded it just yet, but the name has been decided, so if you hear anything about Elevate Rapid City, give me or any of our board a call, and we can let you know more about what's going on there. And so, here's my contact information, if any of you have any questions or follow-up. There is a little handout on the dais that I didn't cover in this little share tonight, but we do continue to partner with our, with the other economic development groups from throughout the Black Hills under the banner of the Rushmore Region Marketing Alliance, and so, like, when the motorcycle rally comes to town here in a few weeks, we'll continue to market to those groups through the Rushmore Region banner. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council members? Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make the motion to acknowledge. I just want to thank you, Mr. Snow, for coming out and giving us all this information, and hopefully, the public's listening, because a lot of times, people always want to know if we're doing anything to create jobs or to get jobs in this town, and Mr. Snow and his crew do a lot of that behind the scenes, you don't see it, they don't get a lot of credit for it, but they do attract a lot of businesses and help grow through different grants and funds that they get by on a relatively small budget, too, and they do a great job with what they have, so I appreciate your efforts, sir, thank you.
Darla Drew.
Just a comment more than a question. You know, if I was doing this ad campaign to people to stay and play and, you know, work here and live here, I would definitely put in there that we have no state income tax, because that would be a big draw, so I think I'd put that on every sign that you've got out there. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben and Jay. Now, on to general public comment. We have one speaker request form from Tim Hughes. Approach the podium, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hi. Like you said, my name's Tim Hughes. I'm here representing a situation with my father, Steve Hughes, with the water department and his sewer charges for the months of April through July. He experienced a water leak with the month that averages the city, you know, the city averages for, and that was between December, January, and February. Upon speaking with the city department manager, Jeff Crockett, I was trying to come to an agreement with him about fixing the sewer charges for that time, because he was being charged $2.59 a month in a single occupants' house for sewer charges when it should have only been $25 a month. And when I spoke to him about that, he fixed it immediately, solved the problem and fixed it immediately, but he's really unwilling to help us with doing the change order on that for the full months that he was charged. So, he keeps kind of going back to the acknowledgement of the water bill, city ordinance 1308-490 that says you only can do one month of charges if there's a water leak, but what I kept explaining to Mr. Crockett was this wasn't a water leak, this is a sewer charge issue that we're trying to get fixed, so that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Tim, what's your dad's name?
Steve Hughes.
And his address?
1636 Fremont Street. Yeah, I just, I don't know, I feel like the water department would be doing a little better job with, you know, watching that sort of thing, or having some kind of quality control program with that, kind of, I mean, I know it's on people to know if they have a water leak or not, but to see a hike that high on sewer charges and to not acknowledge it is kind of ridiculous to me, where they should have a program in place to watch that kind of thing, especially with, like, you know, all the water conservation we're trying to do in the city. If they had something like that where they could kind of do a spreadsheet and follow those kind of trends and let people know, hey, your water bill's really high this month, it would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of where I'm at. Thank you for your time.
Now, on to non-public hearing items, items three through 45. There are no speaker requests for items three through 37, so we'll go right on to consent items three through 37. Would the council like to pull any of these items, or if not, it looks like we do. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Item 13 and 26.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 18, 22, 23, and 29, please.
Are there any other items to be pulled? If not, I could entertain a motion to approve the consent with the exception of items 13, 26, 18, 22, 23, and 29? Was that what it was?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Drury. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now, on to item 13, which is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for well number nine, electrical improvements, project number 16-2365, estimated cost $136,800, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Dale Tech, if I might.
Okay.
Dale, I would guess you're the person to talk to about this item?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I read through this, and it kind of looked like, yeah, it's old, and it might need to be replaced, but there's really nothing wrong with the well at this it might need to be replaced, but there's really nothing wrong with the well at this point, we're just doing preventative buying, is that correct?
This well is old, and the infrastructure that's associated with this well is old as well. We have operation and maintenance plan that we have on all of our water and sewer infrastructure. It's important that we keep this well viable, so this is a planned upgrade, if you will, to make sure that this is a viable water source for us long into the future.
Well, I think water is very important for all of our citizens, but to me, it's like we're replacing it before it breaks, and thinking that that's the best method, I mean, there's the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't replace it, so, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, to me, it's one of the the issues, if we wait until it breaks, it'll take months, if not longer, to get it repaired, and that's the issue that we have with this infrastructure.
All right, thank you, Dale.
Okay, can we have a motion on this item, then?
Second.
Okay, move to approve by Nordstrom and a second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eighteen, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign resolution 2017 dash zero-five-eight, resolution repealing resolution 2010 dash one-six-five, construction fee resolution for Homestead subdivision phase one, sixteen-inch water main oversizing project, and repealing resolution 2011 dash one-six-one, a resolution to, correct, resolution 2010 dash one-six-five, and set a new construction fee for Homestead subdivision, phase one, sixteen-inch water main, oversized project number D E V zero-eight dash nine oh one. Wow.
Well done.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, may I ask a couple questions of Mr. Dale Tech, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Dale, if if I remember correctly in reading the material on this, this is due to repealing all of this, that we don't need it because a TIF is going to cover this?
That's correct, a TIF will reimburse the costs that would normally be collected by a construction fee.
And so the only question I I want, and if you could give me some level that this TIF is performing so the city is going to get reimbursed for this information, or for these finances, because the the only question I have in my mind is, if we're going to rely on the TID, like most developers would, what's the likelihood that the TID is going to pay off this amount, otherwise, the city's going to have to come up with another funding source to pay this off, correct?
Correct, and at that point, I believe if it doesn't perform, we can go back to the construction fees. I don't know that I have an answer for you as far as the performance of where this TIF is at, perhaps our finance officer may have some input on that, maybe not.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to ask a follow-up question of Pauline.
Yes.
I have one more for Dale Tech, though, just for clarification, Dale, you did say, if it doesn't perform, you you're confident that we can go ahead and reassess the construction fees?
Certainly, because it's been an expense paid by the city that we we can recapture.
That that already makes me feel better, but, okay, thank you, Mayor, if I can direct to Pauline, how, do we have any information on this current TID and how it's performing, Pauline?
According to the recapitulation, which means nothing to you guys, but everything to me with the tax increment district from the county, I'll explain in a minute, we're set to receive $929,000 annually on this TID, and so basically what the recapitulation is, is it tells me every year how much we receive the following year on each of our outstanding tax increment districts, so that way we kind of have an idea of what we'll be paying off, what kind of revenue we should be receiving. So as of the end of 2016, the developer had just slightly over $6 million on his debt. It is split between the city and the developer based on percentage. The developer gets 57 and a half percent of it, and the city would get the other 42 and a half percent, so not running the numbers, it's still a healthy TID, coming in at just shy of a million dollars a year.
Thank you, so I I'm a lot more comfortable, number one, with the performance of the TID, it sounds like it, that the actual TID may pay this off, but I'm a lot more comfortable knowing that if the TID does not pay the city's portion of this, the city can still go back and reassess the construction fees, so thank you, Mayor, I yield the floor.
Okay, I need a motion for item eighteen. Okay, motion to approve by Lewis and a second by Amanda Scott. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-two, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city and Dr. Andrew J. Severson concerning track two and track four of Pine View Terrace and clarifying 1993 agreement concerning assessments for Park Drive. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, may I ask just a couple clarifying questions of Mr. Dale Tech, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Dale, on this one, I understand that there was an agreement made by previous councils, and it's documented, that this assessment could wait until the property was ready to be developed, and we're at that point now?
That's correct.
So the only question I really have is it is it looks like this is like redistributing the amount of the assessment across these lots, and my concern is, is just a couple meetings back, we had a situation come before us that all these special assessments were put on one little H lot, and then the city ended up getting it, and we basically did away with a special assessment. Is this assessment being redistributed, is it so that the city will re-get back all of the funds of the special assessment? I see you looking towards Carla. Thank you, Carla?
Carla Kishman with the City Attorney's Office. The agreement doesn't redistribute the assessment, it just clarifies what the 1993 agreement says. There was a set amount of dollars per per foot frontage on Park Drive, and there was the previous agreement, the city staff read it one way, the property owner read it another way, we came to an agreement, but it's the same amount per linear foot frontage on Park Drive.
So that makes me feel a whole lot better, so this is not being redistributed, it's not all going to one lot, it is still going to be applied against the front footage of this development?
Right, all along Park Drive.
All right, and the city will get their money back as this is developed?
Yeah, I think the plan is to get the money relatively quickly, because I think there's a plating procedure that's, or a plat that's on your agenda tonight, and a plan for getting the city that money.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Tech, thank you, Carla, I yield the floor, Mayor.
Need a motion for twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Nordstrom, second by Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-three, approve resolution number 2017 dash zero-five-nine, a resolution in support of the Rapid City Good Samaritan Low Income Housing Project. Amanda Scott.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor if I can get a second.
Second by whom? Mrs. Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the developers that are actually putting in some low-income housing, I know that this one is specifically directed towards over the age of 62, but also I want to thank the reports that were linked to this, and I would encourage all of my council member mates up here to go ahead and and really look at this information, this is some really good information. I know as a city council, we have been talking about affordable in affordable homes, affordable housing, in all the various forms, whether it's single-family dwellings or multiple dwellings or apartment complexes. One of the things that I really think that could jumpstart the city council in some of their discussions is in the summary on page IV fifty, it actually summarizes, you know, now granted, this is dated and it's older, but the current market rent at the time of opening of these low-income apartments, it shows the market rent, and then it shows what the actual tax credit opening gross rent should be at the various percentages of the median household income, and that is such a hard concept, I know, for me to get, it's, other people may may get it, but basically, within Rapid City, there is a median income, household income, you know, and it's based on how many people are in the house and all that other stuff, but whenever we talk about affordable housing, we can kind of get lost in the conversation, whether we're talking low-income, homeless, or this certain percentage of the median household income, and this report actually breaks it down to what somebody would be paying at 30% of their, of the city's median household income versus 40%, 50%, and 60%, and it's a considerable difference, and so I I think this could really help us when we're talking about redeveloping like some infill within the city, if we can look at and encourage some development of this type of thing to get some of this this rent control, not control, rent control, but more affordable rents for our workforce as well as our starting families, because this covers one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom, it's a really good analysis, so first of all, thank you for providing it, I think it really gives the city council some really good information to start looking at governance that we can pass to kind of encourage this, and then I applaud you, based what I read on this, just for providing low-income housing for people over the age of 62, one-bedroom and two-bedroom, that's all this really addresses. It, from what I read, it shows that we can use another four to five 50-unit apartment complexes, so I hope we see that, that this is really good, thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to second what Amanda has been preaching to us about, it's a very good program, I've visited with a few of the residents in some of these housing, specifically the one in the south side of Rapid City, and they really enjoy the apartments, and they really appreciate the affordability, a lot of them that are experiencing right now, and so with the introduction of additional affordable housing, especially for seniors, is a great plus for the city of Rapid City. Thank you, Mayor.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to take this opportunity to wish Mr. Nordstrom a happy birthday, because he he does now qualify for this housing, I do believe.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. On to item twenty-six, acknowledge report on retail malt beverage licenses eligible for video lottery, we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a couple questions for Pauline Sopson.
Sure.
Okay, hi, Pauline, so we've got this report here, and I just lost it, here we go. So we're just acknowledging this report, and and I saw when I was looking at it that because of population growth, we have 88 malt beverages, beverage licenses for casinos available, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Based on the the current population, we could issue up to that that number.
Okay, and right now we have 69 that are used and one is inactive?
Correct.
Do we have to make that many available, is that something, or can we say, you know, we we kind of think we're doing well on this, maybe just add three more, or just be, choose a number and?
Honestly, for all the years I've worked for the city, which is 10 now, we've never increased it even though our population would allow us to do so, but as a council, you could increase it up to the 88 licenses, but then there's a process, I believe there's a lottery to be able to be part of that process, if if somebody were interested in obtaining one of those licenses.
A lottery, that seems appropriate, so, let's see here, so each year you have this review, and according to the population, you you give us a report on how many licenses we can have, do you have a lot of requests right now that are outstanding for for these kinds of licenses?
Not that I'm aware of, I know Heidi in her office would typically be the first point of reference, but she usually talks to me about those, I do know that Mr. Paul Bradsky has asked me to let him know if the council ever does increase those, but like I said, in the 10 years I've been here, we have not.
Okay, I think I could support, you know, continuing that tradition, just because we can doesn't mean we should, so that was all the information I needed, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. Richie Nordstrom.
Mayor, do you have a motion yet?
Have no motion yet.
Oh, let's see, I I'm moved to acknowledge the report, and if I can retain the floor.
Okay, we have a second by Amanda Scott, and Richie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, briefly, what I'm experiencing with additional lotteries, especially lotteries, video lottery casinos that are going up right now, they seem to be in, starting to infringe upon residential area, and that's my major concern, if we start saturating the community with additional casinos, we'll we'll start seeing more of this encroachment into or nearby the environs of residential property. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, motion on the floors to acknowledge, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-nine, approve 2017 contract with the Humane Society of the Black Hills Incorporated, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Joel Adine, just a couple questions on this?
Okay.
Thank you. So Joel, I know that this agreement was started last year, I believe shortly after their budgeting for the 2017 year, is that correct?
I believe so, we've been having discussions with Humane Society for, about various issues for over a year.
And the main thing is that the reason this is coming to us, and it's retroactive, if I'm reading it correctly, so that they will get like a one lump sum for a little over $20,000 to make up for the previous months, because there was a study conducted or an audit conducted, and their expenses and the services they provide the city actually came out to be a little bit more than what the city currently pays them?
That's correct, because we didn't have an agreement at the beginning of the year, it's kind of a makeup, now that we're approving the agreement, it's making up for the past couple months.
And so even though we're approving it tonight, it's going to be retroactive, so this is a one-year contract from the first of 2017 to December 31st?
Correct.
And I understand that it's just a one-year contract, but it's it's going to be renewed each year based on the services, because the Humane Society now, and thank you for asking for the reports to be connected, but the Humane Society actually provides reports now of some of their business transactions.
That's correct, and yeah, I I talked with the assistant city attorney who was working on it today, and and we may be able to, when it's renewed before the end of the year, and we don't assume there's going to be a lot of work to renew it, it'll probably just come forward again, but whether we should look at a multi-year, may have to have a little discussion about the payments then at that point, but I think the anticipation is that it would continue for at least the next couple of years in pretty much the exact same form.
If, just a personal observation, if we do go with a multi-year contract and it comes back before the city council, then much like Ben Snow did, since the city gave money to economic development, I I would like to see something in the contract where they provide an update, you know, two or three times a year, where the documents and their reports can be attached, so that the public as well as the city council members have those reports available, so, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I believe we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Armstrong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That takes us through consent, now on to non-consent. Huh? Nope. On to non-consent items, items thirty-eight through forty-five, we'll open public comment on those items, have a couple speaker request forms, first one on item thirty-eight from Denise Ross.
Sorry. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak, my name is Denise Ross, I live with my husband and two sons over in Chapel Valley, and I am here to speak about the proposed ordinance six-one-eight-six. My family went through the building board of appeals process about two years ago, so I hope to bring the homeowner's perspective to this discussion. Please know that by the time a contracting job has gone sideways, homeowners are distraught at the considerable expense incurred in having their very home in disrepair. Going through the unfamiliar process of reporting this to the city is yet another stress and is not undertaken lightly. It involves a considerable amount of time and effort, and nonetheless, the spro, the prospect for a fair review of the problems now plaguing your house brings home your house brings hope to a sometimes hopeless feeling situation. And so we decided to proceed with the process that was first explained to us by a member of the city staff. I, I believe that homeowners and property taxpayers ought to be on equal footing with contractors when dealing with the city in these unfortunate situations. It appears to me that ordinance six-one-eight-six would do just the opposite. It would leave open an avenue of appeal for contractors while shutting that off for homeowners. I'm not able to imagine a benefit to this, but ultimately you all will decide whether this is the best policy for Rapid City. In the broader context, as you consider ways to vet contractors during the licensing process, please consider adding some other tools for your staff. Under current ordinances, the staff has only the option to suspend or revoke a contractor's license, a severe step to be sure. Or perhaps to impose fines and jail under the general penalty ordinance. When ordinance, ordinance violations are found to have occurred, which was what happened in our case, it might prove more effective to have some steps leading up to the license suspension or revocation before that final sanction is brought to bear. Maybe a system of warnings and deadlines and fines and the possibility of an early review of your license by the building board might be, might make some sense. Finally, I think this whole issue brings up the big picture question of what the role the city ought to play in regulating contractors. If the city truly wants its policy, policy to be that all contractor and homeowner issues be shunted into civil court regardless of ordinance violations or other issues covered by city code, that would seem to run counter to the stated purpose of the building board of appeals. And that is being quote, "to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by adopting and enforcing rules and regulations." It's my own opinion that the city should not abdicate its role and authority to enforce building codes. I recognize that my view is in contrast with that of the city attorney's office, and it will be up to the city council then to determine what the city's role ought to be. I hope my comments offer some helpful perspective. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker request on item forty-three from Kale McNibow.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Kale McNibow. I own Spurly Consulting. I'm here to address the, basically the low-income housing project that was discussed at, you know, at the intersection of Creek Drive and St. Patrick Street. And if I could bring up some overheads. So just to give you a little background. This is St. Patrick's Street. This would be Creek Drive, St. Charles Street. The low-income housing project, which is going to be discussed by the owner further, is located in this location. But what I'd like to concentrate on is the improvements to Creek Drive located right here. Once again, you can see the location of Campbell. It's an arterial street. Creek Drive is also arterial. You notice the Family Thrift sets approximately that location, Ace Hardware. So the, the difficulty we have with the location and the improvements to this road lie in the existing intersection. The existing intersection's offset. You can see St. Patrick's Street and existing Creek Drive South. This right-of-way is eighty feet wide. It's kind of full, thirty-six-foot asphalt. This is a long linear street and improved. Creek Drive North is a twenty-foot asphalt section. The intersection is offset, though. And what you get from that is a turning movement that looks odd. When, when the intersecting streets don't come in at nineties, they look odd. If you drive out there today, you think, gee, it doesn't look too bad. That's because in the red, you can see the location of the existing curb and gutter. If this street section is constructed per the criteria and placed in the middle of this right-of-way, it's going to slide this curb line over another eighteen-point-three That has ramifications with the, the right-of-way, too. What you see with a hundred-foot right-of-way here on Creek Drive and the existing eighty here is that now that intersection's offset by forty feet. I'd like to show you what that looks like. You get a turning movement that looks like that. Now that's not a safer drivable condition, where you get cars at a significant offset to make the corner. This happens because this eighty feet's dedicated, this has got sixty-six feet of right-of-way dedicated, and the criteria manual dictates that you place the road in the middle of the right-of-way. So I hate to do an improvement project that creates a situation where we have right-of-ways that are offset and non-continuous. As you pull up to the intersection, you're confused on where to go. Right now, people navigate it, but it's going to get significantly worse if we construct this per the criteria and put a null and right-of-way.
Thanks, Kale. Your time's up, but I bet somebody would be willing to ask you some questions when this item comes up on the agenda.
Thank you.
Next speaker request from Eric Braun on item forty-three.
Hello, my name's Eric Braun. I'm part of the partnership that will hopefully be building an affordable housing project on the north side of the parcel in question. When confronting this possible requirement to build Creek Drive, a few issues come. First one, the intersection. Kale did a good job of explaining that. We don't want to be essentially investing dollars that aren't going any, that are going to be ripped out whenever that intersection is dealt with. The other side of it, though, is the requirement on the table is to build all of Creek Drive, both sides of the road from East St. Pat to East St. Charles. That's not necessarily something that, you know, a project on one side of the road, I feel, should have to handle. Then essentially, the property owners on the other side of the road get a nice new road, free ride. That said, I don't have an answer for you. I know we have infrastructure problems. I know it's not a great road section. I'd like to find a compromise. We all would. We just don't have it. And the problem is, we're trying to do an affordable housing project without federal tax credits, you know. Just for a, a little bit of comparison, I think I'm correct in this. The, the previous Good Sam's building that went up in two thousand fifteen, there was a journal article that listed the cost of that at over six million dollars for fifty units. We're trying to build ninety-some units for that same price. We're dealing with a little different budget here. If we invest money in the road, it can't be spent on the apartments. And then our whole goal of keeping the rents as low as possible just starts to slip. And at some point, we just can't provide the benefit that we are trying to on this. Thank you.
We have another speaker request from Jim Letner, who says he's available to answer questions. Did you want to wait till we get the item, or you want to speak now, Jim? Here for questions?
Question.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll close the public comment on these items, and we'll go on to ordinances. Item number thirty-eight, first reading ordinance number six-one-eight-six, an ordinance to amend provisions concerning appeals to the building board of appeals by amending sections fifteen-point-zero-four-point-one-two-zero and fifteen-point-zero-four-point-one-three-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This item was continued from July third. Recommendation from committee is to approve. Go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask our city attorney a question or two?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So Joel, this item was continued from the July third city council meeting to this council meeting per staff's request. Can you give us an update on any progress of either clarifying or modifying anything that the staff thought that needed to be redone before we did first reading?
Uh, no. I believe the reason it was continued is at the, the meeting, it was the night before the Fourth of July, in that the two staff members that were primarily responsible for working on it were not available. Carla Cushman from my office worked with the building inspection department to come up with this, so I would defer to Carla any specific questions.
Thank you. Mayor, may I ask Carla Cushman a couple of questions?
Yes.
Thank you. So Carla, there was, you, you did a great explanation when it went through committee as far as trying to address what we're trying to get through the building codes. And, and basically, we've got a building code officer, and they're the ones that go out and make sure that the, the contractors or the builders are following code or based on any variances that they've already applied for and got approval to do in their building materials or, or their, anything that, that they're doing within the building. So what is the, what's the baseline here? Is this change in this ordinance simply to try to streamline and address the city's portion dealing with just the code? Or why are we rewriting this?
Well, the change is really to address situations where there's a homeowner contractor dispute. And there's a, the ordinance is intended to just address when a homeowner asks the building official, Brad Solon, to take some action against the contractor's license. And that's a request that is received periodically, as you can imagine, by Brad Solon. And, and currently, the ordinance reads that if the building official doesn't take the, doesn't take any action against the license of the contractor, that that decision is appealable to the building board. And the ordinance change would eliminate that appeal. It would still be present, Ms. Ross was exactly right, it will still be present if the building official takes some action against somebody's license. And the reason for that difference is that a contractor has due process rights in their license. It's their livelihood, it's their ability to make money within the city of Rapid City. And there are constitutional considerations when you're talking about their license to operate. The homeowner doesn't have similar constitutional concerns, although they certainly have certain persuasive arguments on their side, but the, the due process rights are different. And so there would be that appeal if there's an action taken to suspend or revoke or deny somebody's license to the building board. But in situations where there's a dispute between the homeowner and the contractor, there wouldn't be, and there wasn't any action taken against the license, there wouldn't be that level of appeal. And currently, the ordinance lets that go to the building board and then to the council. The reason for this change is to bring it into line with the other licenses that the city issues. You know, you don't see, if somebody's upset with their security guard, you don't see an appeal to the building, or to the city council. If there's other licenses that are issued, there's not that level of review if there are people upset with the licensee. So that's one of the reasons in support of the, the change.
All right, thank you. And is Brad in the audience? I thought I saw him. Brad, would you mind answering a question? Mayor, may I ask Brad's?
Yes.
So Brad, at the, at the committee level meeting also, the question was raised that is there a mechanism in place when residents, homeowners, business owners, project owners, if they have a complaint against contractors? Do you have a mechanism for tracking those so that when the license does come up for review, there's any notation as far as looking for a pattern or habitual practices that may need to be addressed before granting the continuing, continuing license for the contractor?
Yeah, I'm Brad from Building Services. We, we have a mechanism, we have a tool that we can use where, where we put notes and things in on contractor licenses and things like that. We don't have a lot of these, but yeah, you probably would have to say that if, if we had an issue with somebody's license, we would just bring it up at the point they renewed. Right now, I really can't think of one that we have.
Okay, but you do have a mechanism in place to track any complaints that come in?
We do have a mechanism, yes.
Thank you. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, if I could ask you, I, I know that this ordinance is being suggested by your department, and do you know how long it has been in ordinance where individuals could still come before the board and appeal their situation with contractors or others?
Uh...
Has this been on the books a long time?
Hold on just a second. We didn't bring this forward, okay? So, but can you restate your question, though?
Yeah, how, how often, I'll try to simplify it. How often do you have an individual come before your department on an appeal because of something that's happening and they want to discuss it? They need to take it somewhere before they go to court?
Sure. I haven't had anyone appear with an appeal since Ms. Ross appeared. So I have a, a complaint every two months or so, maybe once every three months, where someone complains, but it's not an appeal. Sometimes we resolve it. We contact the contractor, or we go about it some other way, or maybe it just gets fixed on its own. So, doesn't, doesn't happen very often, no.
That's, that's what I thought. It's, it kind of sound, it sounds to me like we're striking the people out of this particular ordinance when it doesn't happen often, and maybe the resolution is happening between the city and the, the process and the individual that's involved. And perhaps that's a good process to have, because anytime we can meet as citizens and also as city and building officials and contractors and resolve it before it hits attorneys, that's a win-win. And so this, to me, seems like it's going to put more pressure on the individual as well as the contractors, when they don't have that appeal process or they can't file and have that resolution come together. Much like you said, Brad, they may come every couple of months, but in-house, things are getting worked on and leveled out, and everybody moves forward. So maybe we don't need to strike the word individual out of this ordinance. It seems like we're taking the people's rights away from a process that is due to them as well as everybody else involved. And unless you have a different explanation for that, that's what I read into this, and maybe Carla does, if I could, Mayor.
Yes.
I guess what I would say in response to that is currently, as the ordinance is read, anybody can make a, make a question, ask Brad to remove their contractor's license for really any reason. And I think it's important to note that homeowners have a variety of disputes with their contractor from, and really what the building permit and what the city's involvement is, is related only to the building codes, which are a minimum standard for building. You know, a homeowner may have, and a contractor may have a dispute about any number of things related to workmanship, related to finances, related to timing, you know? But currently under the ordinance, any of those issues between a contractor and a homeowner could cause them to ask for Brad to take some action against the license. And if they are unhappy with Brad's decision, which he probably would not take away a license if it was related to something that wasn't the building code, they could appeal that decision to the building board. And a lot of times, well, not a lot of times, because we don't see a lot of these.
Yeah.
But it's not uncommon for this to happen while there's also a lawsuit taking place. And, which really, when we're talking about a variety of differences of opinion, we'll say, between the contractor and the homeowner, those are all litigated, and that's probably the, the appropriate fact-finder for deciding all of those disputes. So the ordinance today is very broad in terms of who can make a decision and, and what that decision may be. And the ordinance also allows an appeal to the council. So that is part of the concern that we had in drafting this ordinance.
So can we keep the ordinance in place and still allow the individual, as it's already stated, not strike the individual, but leave the individual in and still clean up the ordinance? stated, not strike the individual, but leave the individual in and still clean up the ordinance?
I think that was the intention, was to, um, I, I don't think we can, if we leave the individual in, it doesn't really make any change. So, I think that's your decision, if you want to make a change or not.
Thank you.
Let's go to city attorney Joel Landine for a moment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to build a little on what Carla said. The problem is, when we get these complaints, and a lot of the complaints don't have anything to do with code, and Carla was talking to me today, there was apparently somebody calling right now. The work has been passed and met inspection, there's not a code issue, but there's a dispute over payment. And the person is complaining to the building official, trying to get the contractor license looked at because they believe that the contractor, um, is trying to increase costs unfairly. Well, again, there's no code issue really involved. The building board, the building official, the building board aren't set up to resolve disputes based on things like finances. That's what the courts are for, small claims or, or things like that. That is the proper venue to take those. When these end up coming in front of you, frankly, I don't like things coming in front of you that don't need to, because the contractors, as Carla pointed out, have a right in their license. And if it gets in front of you, the problem with these disputes is somebody's going to be unhappy. If you don't take the license, then the citizen, the constituent that's coming in front of you asking for help is going to be told no, and they're going to be unhappy. If you take the license, the contractor can't make his livelihood, or his or her livelihood, they're going to be unhappy and they're likely to sue. So when you're not really equipped to deal with these decisions, I get concerned when we have an avenue for them to get in front of you, because if a decision is made where a license is revoked by the council, or the building, uh, Board of Appeals, then we are likely to get sued. So, one of the things we considered is, well, is this really the right, the right process for this? If it is a dispute between a homeowner and a, a contractor about a building issue, a code issue, that could still go to, uh, the building official and to the Board of Appeals. In fact, I think Ms. Ross, one of her issues was she believed that they were required to get a permit for something, I can't remember all the details, but that was an issue of whether or not the contractor followed the code. That could be appealed because it was a code issue. But if it's a dispute about pay, or about, well, I don't think they did the best job in the world, then those are not really the proper, um, issues to go before either the building board or in front of frankly, the city council.
Right, thank you. Let's get back in line here and go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask a question, first of all, when we, when we grant licenses to contractors, what do we, what are some criteria that we look at?
The city ordinance currently says that they have to pay a fee. It's about $200, depends on what the contractor license, which one it is. But they have to, if they have to have a state license, they have to show that, or have that. They have to show, uh, a general contractor has to have an excise tax license issued by the State Department of Revenue. They have to have insurance of a certain amount, which is called out in the, in the, uh, in the ordinance. And, uh, some of their licenses, y- you might run into where they have to have a, a journeyman's license, or some certain amount of experience. Um, so there are, there are quite a few things that they have to do. They have to fill out the application.
Pass a test?
Uh, most of their licenses have to pass a test. Um, so, you know, for, even for roofing, you have to pass a roofing test. The contractors have to pass a test. The Class A commercial contractors have to pass the ICC. The publishers of the building codes, they have to pass that test. They have to, they take it typically, they're going to take it at a remote site, pay a fee, study for a month, things like that.
In our licensing right now, if there's a bad apple that applies, do we have any way of weeding them out? If they, if they can pass a test and get insured, is that pretty much what we care about?
If they meet the criteria, at this point, I would say, we have to give them a license. Carla and I chatted about this briefly. This thing, that same question that you just asked has come up before. It was many years ago. I don't think any of you were on the council at the time. Uh, the questions arose of, if you have a bad apple, do you deny the license? We could. Uh, if you pull, say you revoke a license, there's nothing in the ordinance now that says that they have to wait a week, or a month, or a year. There's nothing like that. So, we've actually had a couple contractors get their license revoked, and reappear later, anywhere from a year to 10 years, and say, "I want to get a license again." Well, we make them follow the rules. We make them pay the fee, take the test, show the insurance, get the excise tax license, and they get a license again. Um-
I would, I would say there is a mechanism in the ordinance to deal with bad apples. I mean, there's an ability for the building official to revoke or suspend the license, as well as deny, uh, an, an application for a license, and that is something that we would use if there were a series of problems related to code violations, or not getting permits, or, we just, I mean, I've been here for five years, we don't run into it a whole lot, so.
What's, what do we, so a bad apple, what do we determine a bad apple? Just, you're talking about permits, do we determine what they've done or haven't done for homeownership, or how many times they've been sued and lost, or, I mean, how do we determine that?
We would look at it from a code compliance standpoint. If they had corrections on permits, didn't correct them, or refused to correct them, that's what we would be looking at. If they had, uh, several accusations of charging too much money, or not showing up at the job, or not returning my call, we're not going to track that kind of thing. That's a civil thing.
But they fail to pull a permit when they do the work, that's a code violation.
That'd be a code violation.
Shouldn't that be appealable to the, the building board of appeals then? Those sorts of items then? In, in the, in your proposed ordinance, shouldn't those sort of items, that if I am a contractor, I did not pull, uh, the permits I needed to, I did the work, homeowner find out, it's all sorts of problems, that's a violation of the code? Shouldn't that be appealable through the same mechanism that we granted the license?
Well, um, I'm not sure in that case what would be appealed. The homeowner would appeal the decision of building staff that they needed, uh, to get a permit, I guess.
Well, my guess, my problem, I guess what I'm saying is, if we have issues with a contractor who, you said they didn't pull a permit, or didn't follow code, what, you know, maybe built a deck, didn't do it according to whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Those kinds of issues, under your proposed ordinance here, are still things that can be appealed by a homeowner if there's an issue related to those code violations. So if I don't pull a permit, that's a code violation. So if I'm a homeowner, shouldn't I be able to appeal that because it's based on the code? Is that, am I missing something there?
Um, I think Joel has an answer for you. I'm, I think I'm missing something.
So if somebody, if a homeowner came in and told, uh, Mr. Solon, "Look, I had a deck built, it doesn't appear there was a permit pulled," then Brad's going to contact the contractor and say, "You need to fix this," okay? So it's not something, it's not like Brad's going to say, "Oh, well, didn't, they didn't get a permit, that's that," and then force the homeowner to appeal it. So at that point, the contractor's going to have to make a decision on what they're going to do.
Or Brad will pull their license?
Or he could pull their license, and then they could appeal that if he took action against them.
So it puts a lot of power to Brad at that point, doesn't it?
Yes, he's the administrative official responsible for that.
What would be the next step to appeal Brad's decision?
To the-
Let's say he's not always right. I'm sure he's right all the time, but-
To, so, because the contractor, going back to what Carla said initially, because the contractor has a right in their license, once it's been issued, if Brad takes action against their license, they have a right to appeal that. We have to provide them an appeal before we take away their license.
Okay, I'm out of time, so we'll have to continue this down the-
Lot of what ifs. And the better example might be, if the deck, how tall does a deck have to be to require a permit?
Thirty inches off the ground.
So if a deck is built and it's 24 inches off the ground, and the homeowner says, "Brad, they built a deck and they didn't get a permit," and you look at the plan and the code book, and you say it doesn't require a permit, the question is, now should the citizen have the right to appeal that decision to the building code board of appeals? That's the question. The whole emphasis here, and I asked the city attorney's office to take a look at this, because I was concerned with due process on the part of the contractors. So, we need a, we need a mechanism for appealing decisions that are adverse to the contractor, but we should not extend the arm of government to create a, uh, customer service, uh, specific to one of the disciplines of, of all that we regulate here. And that's what, uh, that's what I was afraid of, that's what I asked the city attorney's office to look into. So, for example, no, the deck does not require a, uh, building permit. That decision, because the code is the code, that decision cannot be appealed to the building code board of directors. Uh, it does give Mr. Solon a lot of power. Same power that the police chief has concerning security licenses. Uh, same power, uh, any of the administrative officials have in the areas that they maintain licensure or other professional standards. Uh, and the ultimate, the ultimate area of appeal is to the city council. But the, uh, in this case, we're eliminating the appeal avenue for someone who doesn't like, uh, inaction on the part of the building official. Because the building official works in an organization where there's a chain of command, and there's, uh, various levels of accountability, various levels of review, and so, yeah, equipping this entire board of appeals into this, uh, customer, uh, vendor dispute, uh, I think is not what government is intended to be. So that's the reason that the city attorney looked into it, and that's the reason that we have the amended ordinance. So hopefully that clears up something. Um, so we're done with that, back in line. Richie Nordstrom.
There we go. Um, Mayor, maybe a question for Carla, and then also for Ms. Ross as well. So Carla, um, I apologize, I wasn't able to get a phone call back to you this afternoon, but I, I believe you kind of explained the difference between a license and a specific project. If, my only experience with, uh, appeals coming to the city council is for roofing issues, and, uh, so I'm kind of limited on the experience and exposure of what, what happened with that roof situation. And there was a complaint that was about the, uh, several shiners were, were showing up from this roofing project. So, can you differentiate for me and make it clear and simple, a little thick here, but if you can clear, clarify that, the difference between a project versus the license? I think I understand, but I want to make sure I totally understand that.
Well, we, we had some communications today about what the ordinance does and doesn't do, and, and I'm going to contradict the mayor here, but, uh, it's what I told you. I think the ordinance is written would allow appeals of Brad's decision about the code, about whether or not violated, whether or not something violated the code, uh, that could still be appealed to the building board. Because ultimately, the building board is the expert on what the code requires. Um, the thing that wouldn't, um, so that's kind of a project-specific determination.
Yep.
If there are too many shiners in the roof, that it violates the, the code. Um, what wouldn't be appealable is a license decision, a decision about the contractor's license where Brad chooses not to, um, do what the homeowner is asking to revoke or suspend that license. That would not go to the building board.
Understand that part of it. So if I can get to Ms. Ross, please, uh, does that help you understand what we're trying to do up here with this? Uh, specifically, I recall your case about your roof being, having a lot of shiners being exposed, but still the city, uh, did a final inspection on it. So, if you want to re, help us with the memory part of it as well.
Thank you, and I, I did try to look up the old building board minutes, and I wasn't able to get to those older minutes on the website. I don't know what I was doing wrong, but, um, but, um, as I recall, um, and I think the building board was pretty new when we came along with our issue, and my husband came down to ask a question of Brad about whether or not a reframing piece of the job had been inspected. And as part, ensuing in that discussion, Brad recommended that we file a complaint with the building board. And so I think in that initial appearance before the building board, we weren't appealing anything. I think we were just bringing our case forward. Um, and so I don't know if that's how it would still be done, um, now that things are kind of, have been around for a while. But, but as I recall, that's what it, what happened. And in that initial hearing, they found our contractor in violation of three different ordinances. Um, and so then, in the follow-up process, um, there was some confusion, I'm not sure why, but I did visit with Ms. Kushman right after the meeting to say, "What's the next step in the city's process now that there's these ordinance violations?" And her answer to me was, "There is no further process. That's the end of the road. They found the ordinance violations, and that's it." Then later on, I don't remember how many months later, I happened to be reading through the ordinances, and I found that, um, there is a provision in there that gives roofing contractors 30 days to fix their problems. And it says the building official shall, you know, notify the contractor and have him fix the problems. So then I came back to Brad with that, and he said he wasn't going to take any action, and that's the decision that we then appealed to the building board. And then in that second hearing, they unanimously voted to suspend our contractor's license until he fixed our roof. And then we ended up, then our contractor appealed to the city council, and the city council reversed the building board. So-
Thank you, Denise.
Is that, that all you need?
If I can get back to Carla one more time. Does, does this help her out then in that case, or how, where are we at now with, with her? I'm, I'm going back to her specific case, but does that help her out in her case?
Well, it sounds like, uh, the first time she went before the building board, and I'm, I'm, that's helpful for me to remember, too. Um, uh, that would still be available because there really were disputes about what the code required on a roof, and the building board made a determination about that. Um, it, the ordinance that's proposed would not provide the second step where Brad refuses to take action against a contractor's, uh, license based on the level of the ordinance violations, code violations that are found. And I think a big part of our decision in, um, or our conversation in this case was that there was a current lawsuit that was going on. And so, um, taking action against the contractor's license based on the, what the staff, and I don't need to speak for Brad, but what the staff felt were minimal code violations, uh, was not justified in this case. And that, that was appealed by Mr., my, by Denise Ross and her family, and the building board disagreed, and, um, so that is, that level of appeal would not be available if the ordinance change goes forward.
Thank you. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I'll be supporting the change. Um, if some of the council members were here, I think when we initially had the case with Mrs. Ross and, um, that situation, I believe it was, you know, uh, part of what my support for this is, not that we're taking out the people in this, and that was one of my concerns when I first spoke about this at the legal and finance meeting. What's important to remember is what's already been stated by the attorney's office is that when there are code violations, there is a process for those to be logged. And it's up to that building official then to make that decision based on the information that he has when that license is either renewed, or if it's new. Now, I don't know if we would have any files on somebody who might be applying for a new one, but we surely would for renewals. But from my recollection, and some of the people that were here, part of the problem is, part of what the attorney's office was stating was that we've almost become a court, which becomes a very dangerous situation from a litigious standpoint, when in fact, consumers have the ability to take contractors, and that was part of what was stated, is that there was a lawsuit also going on. So, we're acting like a court, and these people are actually in court, and we put ourselves in a very perilous situation. Um, I support it because I don't believe this is the venue for, um, the appeal for the people, because they already have the ability to go to the building official to have code violations logged on a particular license. Um, the problem that we have, I think, in my recollection is right, many of the complaints are not about code, they're about what was stated earlier as well. Many of the things not related to city code, and we have to be very careful not to wade into that field. And I think what's important is that there's a mechanism for, uh, consumers to still see the building official if there is an actual code violation, which will be logged, which will be weighed in that renewal. Um, and so we're not cutting the people out of this process, because if we were, I wouldn't support it at all. And I just want to let my colleagues know that I will be supporting the change. Thank you.
Let's go back to, uh, city attorney Joel, but I'm getting choked up.
I think that was from before I-
Okay, we'll go to John Roberts then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember this, uh, with Ms. Ross in the, the building board of appeals. Um, I was sitting in there at the time. Uh, I did not- I did not realize until Ms. Ross and I spoke a few weeks ago that after it came to the city council and the license was reinstated, everything that she was promised as far as her roof getting done by that contractor went away. So she did not get her roof fixed, and I think that's where she fell through the cracks. And there's got to be some way that we can hopefully avoid that in the future. I do agree with what many of my colleagues have said, that we do not need to get in the middle of disputes between homeowners and contractors if it's not a code violation. Now, what I'd like to see in the ordinance is, if it is a code violation, that the citizen has an avenue. And I'd like to see that in the code, because if it's not in the code, you know, Brad, you're not going to be around forever. Hopefully, you'll be around quite a bit longer, but you're not going to be here forever. So I've got a lot of trust in you, but I can't definitely say I can say that about the next person that comes along. So I would like to see that put into the code. Thank you very much.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, didn't want to be the last one to speak, so I thought I'd jump in and say, you know, the folks, we're, as my colleague, Mr. Laurenti, did a great job illustrating, there's, unless my civics are wrong, there's the legislative branch, which we are, we make the laws, and there's the executive branch, which is the mayor, and they enforce the laws, and then there's the court system which interprets the laws, and we are not that. And we are doing a great job illustrating right now exactly why we should not be doing that, because none of us know what we're talking about. And that's the truth. We're not, it's not because we're idiots, just, I'm probably the most qualified to make decisions on building code here, and I'm still not qualified to do that, especially if it's not my job, or if I've not been out there to see the job. And I don't want to be in the position to have to try to, you know, of taking sides. It's not something that we should be doing, that there's a court system for that. If there's a code violation, it's, it's, it's an ordinance, they have to enforce it. So they're going to enforce the ordinance as it says, they're in violation of the code, and they're going to make a correction, and there's an avenue to do that. So for us to sit up here and say, well, we heard that, we heard that he did a bad job, or he didn't do that, well, okay, but that's, this is a small town, we all have, we hear people all over town, and we have to live here, and we have neighbors and everything else, and it puts us in a, in a position to make, pick winners and losers, and we're really not in that position right now. We shouldn't be doing that in a situation where it's pretty clear, you know, that's, that there's lawsuits, and we can be thrown in the middle of a lawsuit, and they can say, well, the city council said, well, that's not something we should be sticking our nose into. So I appreciate them cleaning up the language and, and taking us out of the loop in that situation, because I think it should be left to a simple, a process that goes down below, down below us, and there, if you're gonna take someone's livelihood away, you gotta have a, a process for that. It's no more, I have no more comfort in, in doing this, citing this, and I do a security license, like the mayor said, I don't know anything about security, it's not my job, and I don't want to make it political. So anyway, that's my, why. I'm supporting the approval of the ordinance, I do appreciate the fact that people have rights, but I think the ordinance is there, and I don't think it doesn't matter if Mr. Solan or, or anybody's sitting there, it doesn't matter, they're gonna enforce the law, that's what they do, they do it every day. Trust me, they do do it every day. So, thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second by Steve Laurenti. Motion for approve, all, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Scott.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
No.
Modrick.
No.
Solomon.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Drury.
No.
Roberts.
No.
It's tied.
I believe it fails because it's an ordinance.
Yep. Yep. Okay, motion fails. Item 39, second reading, ordinance number 6188, an ordinance to update the requirements for purchases by amending section 3.04.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Recommendation from committee is to approve. Motion to approve by Laurenti, and a second by Roberts. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 40, first reading ordinance 6187, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Moller's Limited Partnership for rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located northwest of the intersection of East Omaha Street and La Crosse Street. Committee recommendation is to approve. Motion by Laurenti, second by Drew. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have to abstain from this, but even though I'm abstaining, I need to say one thing, this was supposed to have been pulled. KTM must not have got to you yet, but I'm sure they'll do that before second reading, but I do have to abstain from it.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from John Roberts. Item number 41, Community Planning and Development Services, we'll go to Darla Drew.
Item 41, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for spell revocable trust for a preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed lots 4A and 4B of Block 4 of Rushmore Regional Industrial Park located at 3600 Jet Drive. Recommendation approved with stipulations.
Motion by Drew, and second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 42, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Andrew J. Severson for a preliminary subdivision plan for lots 1, 2, and 3 of Pine View Terrace, generally described as being located on Park Drive. Recommendation approved with stipulations.
Okay, motion to approve by Nordstrom.
Second.
Second by Roberts. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Item number 43, please.
Item 43, appeal of denied exception request from Spurlock Consulting on behalf of Market Square LLC to waive additional pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, handicap, ramps, streetlight, conduits, and water main on Creek Drive, City Files 17 EX117. This item was continued from July 3, 2017, the council, city council meeting. Recommendation, send to council without recommendation.
Okay, we'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just letting the council know I'll be abstaining from this for business reasons, thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also have to abstain from this because I may have a personal interest into, in it eventually, thank you.
Okay, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I may, I'd like to ask, Dale, take a question on this, if I may, please.
Please do.
Dale, the, the concern here that was brought up by the developer is the realignment of Creek Drive. Can you speak about the misalignment and their projection that it will be even more misaligned if the improvements are required? And then from the standpoint of, because I live over in that area, I know that most of the traffic turns left and right off of Creek Drive, and there is some traffic that crosses there, but, so if you can speak to that, and then what the city's plan would be, and when you think that possibly would happen, a realignment?
What Mr. Magna Bo illustrated to you is true, geometric-wise. When you widen a road, add a lane there, you're shifting the lanes a little further apart, making the offset a little worse. As I stated at Public Works Committee, this is a signalized intersection, and it's very similar in nature, in fact, if not identical, to the intersection of Sheridan Lake Road and West Main Street near the guard camp. Both intersections are signalized intersections, and both of them are, well, I shouldn't say both of them, the West Main, Sheridan Lake Road is a protected movement, so each direction going north-south is a protected movement. There's not a conflict there for cars traversing the intersection at the same time. With that being said, I can't give you an answer as to when this intersection will ever be aligned. I spoke with the, had a call actually from the property owner on the south, who said he'd lived there since, I think, 1955. And he said 1972 is when the Department of Transportation came through, and they were, St. Pat was under their jurisdiction, and they're the ones that made that offset the way it was. So that's been in existence for over 40 years now. If Creek Drive gets constructed to the north, I don't see any further improvements in that intersection in quite a long time, probably not until the useful life of the pavements on both sides of the intersection has been exceeded.
Okay, so these improvements would get their use, is what you're saying?
I believe that to be the case, yes.
Okay, so it's not like they would be putting them in, and then in a couple of years, the city's going to come out and say, hey, we're going to realign this, we're going to have to tear up everything you just did two years ago.
Yeah, there, there's nothing in our five-year capital plan, and I don't believe there's anything in our 10-year look ahead to see for, that there's any improvements in this area, especially at this intersection.
Okay, and thank you, Dale, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to add as well, because I sit on the TIF committee, this, this particular property is also being considered for a TIF, it's headed to the planning commission at this point, and that particular TIF also overlaps another TIF, and I believe it was TIF 54, if I need to be corrected on that.
52.
52. 52. So we have TIFs in this area that will be of advantage for the developer, so I, I believe that what the council needs to look at is a couple of things. The usefulness of requiring these, the fact that we've talked about this many times as a council, that we allow, and previous councils have allowed, a lot of exceptions to curb, gutter, and sidewalk. We're not talking about just road here, we're talking about sidewalk, which pedestrians will use, because they're building living quarters. These people are going to want to walk that area, they're going to want to be able to walk up to the shopping, and then along with the fact that we are affording, have already afforded a TIF prior to the, one that is in the process for this particular development. And so I think the city, the council ought to hold the line on these improvements, especially for the, the, the people who will be living there, they'll be using these improvements, and they will appreciate the fact that they're there, especially the sidewalks and the draining, the curb and gutter, those types of things, and we need to begin to hold the line with the balloper so that we don't create situations like we have been running into from previous councils. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to uphold staff's decision to deny the appeal. Okay, we have a second on that from Steve Laurenti. Mayor? If I may continue, there's a couple of reasons that I'm asking the staff to uphold a denial, is that, and the city council to uphold a denial, is that, number one, if it, if we have to do this project out of the CIP, that's going to put an additional strain level on the CIP budget, and since it's not in the five-year plan, or even in the 10-year look ahead plan, which I probably won't be around for, but, and thanks Chad for the birthday thing. The, the other issue has to do with if we're going to do less than minimum for people that are going to be living in, shall I say, affordable, or what they're using as the term for affordable housing, I don't think that's fair for those people to be placed in a condition like that. So I'd like at least to see the minimums upheld. Thank you, Mayor. Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I bring Kale back up?
Yes.
Hi Kale.
Hi.
Thanks for your presentation, because it shows a lot on paper, and it also shows a lot, if you just go there, sit, and watch the traffic flow, it's more used than I think any of us realize. Looking at the condition of the roads, I had asked Dale if he knew where we were at in the fair to pour on this road, and it looks pretty torn up, and driving it all the way down to the bridge, it's, it's in pretty rough, rough condition. And then that alignment, I see where there's a pole, I took a picture of it, there's a utility pole of some sort, it's cut in half, who knows how long it's been there, but it looks to me like it's been thought of on the city side, that at some point we would push over to that side of the street in order to get the alignment in, maybe not on the side where we're looking at the development, because it seems like it needs to push in that direction, but without right-of-way or even negotiations, we're in a catch-22. You are to develop this, which is a needed piece of property, both for commercial and also for low-income housing, it's necessary. There's already, it surprised me, I didn't see it in driving, but there's already a pavement walkway along there, I think it's a combination of drainage and pavement, but it was nice to see that, but it's a walkway to nowhere, it doesn't, doesn't go anywhere, it just goes along Creek Drive, and there's no sidewalk on the other side. I, I get that we need to fix some conditions here, but I almost feel like the city is responsible for a portion of this, and, and that's where we could make good on this, because we need the development, we need the investors to do this. What else can you add on this in your research that can help us make something clearly happen and not have this fall apart?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to readdress this issue. I would like to point out that what you see on St. Patrick Street, there's, you know, sidewalk on St. Patrick Street, East St. Charles Street on the north side of this parcel also has sidewalk. The asphalt lane you see is actually a bike path that connects those two, so there is pedestrian access along Creek Drive. The asphalt surface on Creek Drive is obviously only 20 feet wide. Now, if you think about south of St. Patrick Street, the city's already got 80-foot of right-of-way secured. That means they only need another 10 on each side, and you've got an arterial corridor, which is what Creek Drive is. We go up to north of Creek Drive, that thing's 66 feet wide, and it's in poor condition. So the, the idea that as part of our plotting, we could dedicate the other 17 feet to it, the car lot at some point is going to get redeveloped, but that, that movement needs to happen, in my opinion, it needs to happen north of St. Patrick, St. Patrick Street. You know, south of St. Patrick Street, we've got most of the corridor we need, we already have curb and gutter and 36-foot of asphalt. So if we're going to make this transition, let's make it north of Creek, of St. Patrick Street. You know, in the sense that, we've got to think about what part of this road's going to be a throwaway long-term. Should we take the one that's already got the right-of-way mostly dedicated, is in a lot better shape than it is north, and throw that away? Or do we fix it north of St. Patrick Street? You know, I, I guess, just, if I can throw this out there too, the, the idea that, well, there's not that much traffic movement north and south, so it's probably not that big of a deal, well then why are we building arterial street if there's, if we don't feel that there's any traffic on it?
I know just in watching the traffic today, it seems that that's a cut across. It seems like what's happening is they're coming off of St. Pat, they're getting on Creek, they're headed towards 44, there seems to be a lot of traffic on there, a lot more than you realize, because it's very small residential when you're going up north, but that section, at some point we have to address it, and today I think is the day, we need to do something right, and either fix this intersection, and do it as a cooperative, because I don't believe that it was the developer's fault that we have an offset. Obviously, in 1972, that was when the misalignment happened, and maybe cooperatively get this fixed so that we can have good housing and a nice commercial frontage, and continue to build that forward. That, that road is just waiting for improvements, it's, it's in pretty bad shape, and I'm surprised that we're not in a five-year, seven-year, or 10-year. If I could, I could ask Dale really quick, Dale, you were going to tell me what the condition of that road is and where you thought it might fall into the plan.
The current pavement condition index for that chunk of Creek Drive is a 44, so 44 out of 100, so it would be in the fair category.
Really?
Yes.
Have you driven it?
Yes.
I've got pictures. Thank you, Kale.
Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I don't know if Kale is going to answer this question or not. First of all, we're talking about affordable workforce housing here, correct?
Yes, I, I believe the owner would might be better-
Mr. Letner or Mr. whoever, Mr. Jones? Mr. Brown?
Any of the three.
Any of the three stooges want to step up and? Been sitting so patiently tonight, I appreciate that. So can you tell me, what's the renting, is it $690 a month is what we're trying to hit here for one or two-bedroom places?
So our one-bedrooms, we are shooting for $660 a month.
Okay.
I think as some people have brought up, affordable housing means-
Right, no, that's fine, question, I'm assuming meticulous as you are, you probably did some sort of study about the needs for affordable housing in this town?
I've been, no, I've been in the multifamily business for 16 years. I do believe that there is a hole for people making more than 20- I do believe that there is a hole for people making more than $25,000 a year, less than $60,000 a year. Most projects you see that have affordable housing tied to them generally have federal dollars associated with them. That's not what we are.
I guess my point being here is, we all sit up here and we wanna talk about affordable housing, meaning this emergency crisis we have in Rapid State, South Dakota, which maybe it is, but none of us wanna step up and bite the bullet when it's time to do it. This intersection, folks, I used to work south of St. Patrick down, and that's industrial area. There might be one or two houses still left over, but you know, we don't need to adjust that. My personal opinion, I'm an engineer, but we don't need to adjust that intersection. No one's going south and they're not going north across Creek Drive. They're going down St. Patrick Street. And if you're gonna fix the street, then make it, go and fix it north, maybe make it bigger, but not, I don't think we need to realign the intersection at this point. I think what we need to do is we need to find people who are willing to step up and make, create affordable housing in this town. And if it doesn't pencil out, they're not gonna do it. And then we're gonna sit there and say, why don't we have affordable housing in this town? Well, because we're not accommodating them. I realize, oh, somebody's gonna say, well, they need to put more money in the game or whatever. I don't believe that. I think this is something we can do. It's an opportunity for us to actually create some units for people to step up and afford their house. They can afford a nice place to live, a safe place to live. And by the way, if you look east on Creek Drive, you're looking at trees and the main society, there's not a lot in that direction. But to the west, there's a really nice shopping area with, I think, a Starbucks and places to eat and places to shop. You know, and if you go, uh, west, Ace Hardware's right, yeah, west, whatever, Ace Hardware and those. But there's a lot of places there, it's a great place for this. But I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna do anything with the eastern part of that, eastern half of that property. I think the creek, does the creek parallel the street all the way down that road? Or how far, where does it turn? It turns there somewhere, over by the Star West Complex, I believe, on the other side of the creek. But this is a chance for us to do this, affordable housing we keep talking about, and here it is right in front of us. You know, I don't know that's, I don't consider it painful for the city either, I'm not sure I'm getting that part of it. I just think that's, let's get something built that people can actually live in. So I'm gonna vote against this motion right now, and hopefully we'll get a substitute motion if we can defeat it to approve it. Because I think it's something we need to do. And we need to step up finally, and here's our opportunity. Campaign flyers out in front of you, affordable housing. Well, here's affordable housing, folks, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And may I ask Mr. Dale Tech a question or two, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Dale, this has been identified, or Creek Drive has been identified as an arterial road?
That's correct.
So if my memory serves me correctly, though, Creek Drive going south doesn't really connect anything when you turn south on it off of St. Patrick, does it?
No, it does not. It's a dead-end road. The major street plan shows it being continued in the future to the south to, I believe, Minnesota Street, which doesn't exist there now to begin with. It's all agricultural rural property, where there will be another arterial intersection. So sometime in the future, development-driven, Creek Drive will be extended to the south and intersect with Minnesota Street that has yet to be extended as well.
And as it's already been stated, going north right now, there's not a whole lot, whether it's platted residential sections or commercial or industrial, there's really nothing between, on the northern section of that going north of St. Patrick.
Correct. Rapid Creek runs through there, so there's a lot of floodplain issues there. So just north of this property, all the way up to Center Street, there's a lot of property that probably won't be developed due to the floodplain, floodway implications along there.
And then if I remember correctly, Dale, during the public works meeting, you had recommended of working with the applicants, if you had a little bit more time, of trying to come up. Because I understand the applicant's concern of trying to put in a whole road when they're only on one half of it. I get that part of it. But I believe you suggested of possibly working out an agreement with the applicants that they could at least put up some money for their portion of it, and then that could be taken into consideration. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
As this stands right now of waiving all of it, I think we have been, as a city council, stating that we got to quit kicking the can down the road and trying to come up with money to put in curb and sidewalks and streets and the street light. And I understand there's a tip, we haven't seen it yet. I would hope that some of this would have been considered in it if there's growth in that area that's going to allow that incremental to pay off. Without having the TIF in front of me, I cannot reverse the opinion right now. I would rather see this postponed, if at all possible, to see if we could work out an agreement between the applicant and the city. This just goes against the grain that where the city council's been going is to just totally waive the installation of all of this without some type of consideration, especially, as Alderman Nordstrom already said, if we're looking for affordable housing, and thank you for even considering it, we desperately, I believe, need more affordable housing. But I'm just thinking that if you have to put in this much in this area, this may not be the right area right now without the future growth in that northern section. So, or if it is, I would rather see you work out a deal where at least you put up your portion of getting the street and everything. Then I could probably look to see about waiving this. But there'd be something attached to it to kick down the road a little bit without just waiting for the city council to come up with more money in the future. So, thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question or two for Mr. Letner, please.
Okay.
Hello. So if you have to put in this road, if you have to make these improvements of curb, gutter, et cetera, are you still going through with the project?
That's a really good question. And it's very difficult to answer. I think what happens frequently, in my experience as a developer, is that there's a general opinion that developers will go forward with projects regardless of what the city imposes on them. And that's not true. They, if we have to spend $400,000, we have to rethink this. Where I'm at, and I'm speaking for all of us in this, is we wanna negotiate the best deal that we possibly can so that we can apply to the state for state dollars to fund this project. There's three critical components to it. One's the developer, the other's the city, and the third is the state. We've had discussions with the state, and quite frankly, the state plays a huge part of this project. I wanna reiterate that we're not using federal dollars. This is not a voucher program. We're using a program that the state has had around for several years, but no one's used it. These are dollars that the state will issue a bond for, and they will turn around and loan to us to get this type of housing project. Back to your question. Where I'm at is I wanna negotiate the best deal that I can with the city, and I wanna have broad support. And I wanna take that to the state. I don't, that's all I can do. I mean, these public-private endeavors are not, they're not easy.
Oh, they aren't, they aren't. Like I said before, doing something good isn't always easy. Could you please stay there? So if you did have to do this road, would that mean that you'd have to pass on the cost to the people that will be renting or buying or whatever?
Yeah, right. We'd be looking at that. And what we did in our TIF proposal is we put rent caps on ourselves so that we had something to bring forward with the TIF that says, okay, we're giving you the TIF, what are we getting in return? The state doesn't have those rent caps. I think, you know, as our, as we spend more dollars on this project, we have to increase the rents. The project has to appraise out. You know, we can't spend the dollars twice, so the more expensive it is, the higher the rents have to be in order for it to praise, in order for the state to go for it. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, you know.
I would say I agree with Alderman Lewis on his assessment of this and that we do need affordable housing, and we have been crying in the wilderness for these kinds of projects, and now it's coming forward. But I also agree with Alderwoman Scott, how she feels that maybe we could come up with some kind of a negotiation compromise or, you know, how we could go through with this project to make everybody kinda get what they want. I don't think we're all gonna get what we want out of this deal, but I think we could come closer.
And I think that, you know, what I floated to Dale was, okay, we increase the TIF by $200,000. We give the city $200,000. We don't have to get into, I know that there's a lot of discussion about this intersection. I would like to see that done as a comprehensive solution. Maybe I'm crazy, but I just don't see spending dollars to make this more misaligned. But basically what I told Dale was, okay, we give you half of this, the engineer's estimate, which was $200,000. We tack it on the TIF, can you live with that? You know, generally, he was okay with receiving the dollars, but we couldn't put it in the TIF because, and I get his point. You know, it looks a little shady to be, for me, for us to be writing a check to the city that somehow ends up in the general fund and isn't used for improvements to Creek Drive.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm out of time. Or nearly.
I'm gonna go back to Public Works Director Dale Tech for a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of things I'd like to add to this discussion. First of all, they're proposing to plant three lots. That's the item in front of you today. One of them is a housing lot located adjacent to St. Charles. And the other two are commercial lots adjacent to St. Patrick Street. And then one on the east there is St. Patrick Street and Creek Drive as well. So the costs for these improvements aren't solely on what they're proposing for their housing, affordable housing project. There's a commercial lot involved too, that certainly some of the costs for improvements to Creek Drive should be shifted, if you will, to that commercial property. Another thing I'd like to point out is there's a dead-end water main on East St. Charles Street. And one of the requests is to not build water main that would connect St. Pat to St. Charles Street. And that redundancy is important for fire protection. Staff certainly feel strongly that if you're gonna waive anything, don't waive the water main. That's gonna be critical for fire protection of that area in the future. So just a couple of things I wanted to add, thank you.
Steve Florenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to ask Dale Tech a question, if I may, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Dale, do we have a grasp at all of the ballpark of the cost of these improvements that the developer would have? Do we have that?
I believe the developer's engineer has a rough cost estimate of $400,000 for the improvements.
And do you agree with that in a general sense?
There, in a general sense, yes. There's been no detailed engineering design done to know what the true cost would be.
Okay. One last thing I wanted to share with my colleagues, because I am on the TIF committee, was the value of that TIF that's working its way through the Planning Commission now. But the value of that TIF is 1.6, almost $1.7 million for this particular area. So I think it's important for you to understand that we are stepping up as a city. They're gonna be able to use their tax increment to pay off a large portion of this development. Their land, the land acquisition is involved with this particular project, part of that TIF. So they'll be able to use their taxes to be able to buy the land, if you will, for this project. So the city is stepping up. Understand that the TIF is almost $1.7 million. So it's a very lucrative situation for the developer to put this together and make it happen. So if we're requiring these improvements to make this street and the living conditions for the people who will live in parts of this development, we're stepping up to the plate. Don't think that because we're requiring this, that this isn't going to happen. This is going to happen because we got a $1.7 million TIF that's gonna help support doing this particular project. And it will be that much better of a project if we require these things and not kick it down, you know, for the future councils to have to deal with when there's additional development in that area. We need to take care of this road today. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I did some checking with the staff, a little bit of checking. And I understand that there's this TIF 52, or TID District 52 is still on the books, and there's nothing really happening with that. So the best I can tell you is there's about $375,000, just approximately. It has to be paid off in the previous property, and that's what you're referring to, Alderman Florenti, about the property acquisition. So there's some, I don't know, it almost appears to be a conflict of interest what's going on here with the developer in acquiring his own property. So it raises some red flags for me as well. So just, it just doesn't work for me at all at the current conditions. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Just a warning, Ms. Armstrong has said that she would give me her time if I needed it. Quick question, well, not even a quick question, just a statement or anything. There's some things that have been set up here that I wanna correct for sure. I guarantee you, Mr. Letner, if says he's not gonna do something, he's not gonna do it. He's not a guy that pulls punches or he tells the truth. And I guarantee he's negotiating in good faith as anybody ever met. The guy is, as far as I'm concerned, he's about as straight-up an individual as I know. And I don't know him that well, but I know him business-wise, he doesn't say things he's not gonna do. And I know that, once again, this is affordable housing. It's right before you, Richie, it's your biggest deal. You care about that much, this is your chance to do it. Because we overlay TIFs up here all the time. We did it for Black Hills Corp. up on some property on top of 16. We do it. It happens. It's not unusual for that to happen. So, Mr. Brown, you seem like you have something you'd like to say? Is there something I can possibly?
If you're willing to ask, yes.
Well, you're, something you're just trying to get off your chest there for a second?
The reason why this property is attractive to us as a partnership is two things. This process takes a long time. Normally, when you go out to develop a piece of property, you have to identify something. If you don't own it already, you have to purchase it. In order to do so, you have to either get a property owner that's willing to let it slide for a long time. We started working on this last fall. I don't know of any person I can buy a piece of property from that would allow it to drag on that long before a transaction occurs. That's why we liked having Jim in the partnership. The other reason was, is that he was willing to sell it for $2.40 a square foot, which when you're talking about flat ground that is served by East St. Charles Street, where the approaches for this are intended to go, that has water line there, that has a sewer line there, that in the previous TIF, that street was built, and the drainage that plagued that area for a long time was taken care of. So we felt this was a good price for a very developable piece of property. We're not looking to make a mint on this. If you look at the pro forma that we included in our TIF application, the, I wasn't prepared to litigate this part, but if I'm remembering correctly, what we're projecting for income in the first year is $40-some thousand. So between the three of us, what we're talking about is if we're able to get to 95% occupancy, we believe that we can. Maybe we can get to 100, I hope so. But there's no guarantees in life. If we can get to that, that income is after the three of us each put hundreds of thousands of dollars at work here. And that, if we can get there, it goes to building costs too. What we've projected is building something for $90 a square foot, which is, there's no fath in that. We've come, I think, with a very efficient project, efficient in the fees that we've negotiated with the people that we hired to do design and engineering, efficient in the land cost, efficient in our anticipated construction. So I disagree that this is some sort of attempt to make a mint at the city's, with the city's help. It's an attempt to provide low rents. There's a reason why market rents are market. That's what it takes to build a market-rate apartment complex. Those are the rents that it takes to support one. These are much lower.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Ms. Armstrong, for giving your time.
Motion on the floor is to uphold the denial. So a yes vote will be to uphold the denial, and a no vote would be to grant the exception. Understood? So all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Roberts. Drew. Nordstrom.
Aye.
Laudrick. Lewis.
Chair votes aye. Under Staff Items Number 44, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign contract with Coca-Cola Bottling Company to provide hot and cold beverage services at Rapid City Recreation Facilities from October 1, 2017 through September 30th, 2020. Recommendation is for approval. Motion by Scott, and second by Laurenti. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for Jeff Beeler, please.
Okay.
Just because there are people that really appreciate other bottling companies, I'd like to know for sure that this was made open to all the bottling companies, and was, was there any other bids?
It absolutely was made available to other bottling companies, and the only bid that we received was the one that is in the packet from High Country, the Coca-Cola distributor.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. All, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 45, under Appeals, is to appeal the denied security license of Eric Yellowboy. This was continued from July 3rd, and at the applicant's request, asking to continue it to the August 7th City Council meeting. Is there a motion on that? Motion by Scott, uh, motion by Scott for that motion, and a second by Drew. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just got to tell Ms. Armstrong, I don't talk up here much, but whatever. Can I ask the chief a question, please?
Yes.
Mr. Chief Juggers, is there any harm in denying, giving him another two weeks again, or do you have any problem with that? Is it?
Not at all, I recommend you do so.
Okay, great, then no, no public safety issue, thank you.
All right, motion is to postpone to August 7th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now on to public hearing items 46 and 47, there are no speaker requests, so we'll go on to consent public hearing items 46 and 47. You can pull any of these, or vote on both of them at once. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Lewis, second by Laurenti. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 48, the bill list, we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Drury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 48, the bill list, we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Drury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Laurenti, second by Solomon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.